Six oh two. First part of business is finance committee and. That's. Excuse me?
It's Ursig.
Ursig, okay, thank you. Want to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in the position?
Yeah, I just moved to Woodstock a couple of years ago. I live over on, across from Gilbert's Hill. And I've just been trying to get, become a part of the community a little bit. But I don't know if you have my, I did give my resume, my CV to you guys. And what it is, is that I'm a finance is my trade and that's what I do for work. Currently, I work for Massachusetts, Mass Brigham. And so it's Massachusetts General Hospital and Brigham Women's Hospital and twenty other hospitals. Throughout New England here and doing the finances for them. So that when there was an opportunity for a person on the finance committee, I was looking at it and saying, you know, I'm pretty good with budgets and finance, that I'd be more than happy to help out. And learn the process that you guys go through. As compared to what I do is that right now, currently, the financials closed for the hospitals. And I have to get a about a hundred and twenty-five grants that I work on is what I usually work on in grants. I do some clinical stuff also. And reconciling all of those done by the end of the week. And then start planning for, you know, what's going on and budgeting and everything else like that. Submitting the grant applications, things of that is what I do on a daily basis. And so I understand the, pretty much the life cycle of a budget and a grant. And how to sit there and prepare a budget, set it up. And then after, in a grants world, it's awarded and, you know, the town world. I would assume it's budgeted and there's finances. I'm pretty good at managing how that money is spent and verifying and, you know, making sure that all the expenses are appropriate and allowable. And accountable. And it's sort of like what I do for a living and I'm certified as a grants administrator and grants manager. And I've been doing it for about thirty years now.
Have you been to any of the finance committee meetings?
I've been to three.
Okay, will you be able to make the meetings?
I will be able to make the meetings.
Anyone else have any question?
No.
There was one spot available.
I would move to appoint him to the committee.
You have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Finance committee, thank you.
Thank you.
No, no problem. Hopefully I can help out, I'm looking forward to it.
Next up is Stephanie Wyman.
Hello.
Hi.
Is it okay if I stand here?
Is there a mic up there?
Yeah, we, the mic up there is not a camera, so.
Okay.
My name is Stephanie Wyon, I moved to Woodstock in twenty eighteen. I've never done any sort of town volunteering or been on any committees or, so I'm a first timer for sure. I applied to three different positions, grand juror sounded the most interesting to me, town agent and then auditor. Honestly, I don't know what any of those positions do. I've done auditing in my job, I am a employee relations specialist. So I do a lot of disciplinary actions, adverse actions. Things like that where I work with lawyers a lot, so that's why the grand juror was interesting to me. But I didn't really, I was trying to look up about the grand juror, like what they do. It seems like an antiquated position and that they don't really have much authority. I'd just be interested to know what they do and feel interested in that position, depending on, you know, what it entails. Other than that, I really, I just saw that there were a lot of vacancies and figured I'd throw my name in the hat and kind of see where I could fit.
I'm surprised, just a second. So first of all, thank you for volunteering, we want more people coming in and volunteering. So thank you for doing that. I do have an update for the board, based on tonight's meeting, I reached out to the state. And the grand juror position was done away with in two thousand seventeen by an act by the state legislature. So there is no grand juror position and the town does not have a charter that lists one. So that is a position that currently does not exist. And there is no kind of work to be done for them. In the past, for reference, they had the authority to enforce criminal misdemeanor laws, ordinance violations. And other things such as that, now all that goes to state's attorney, obviously. So that position kind of no longer exists. So I'd recommend the board not appoint anyone to the position, as we should not have one. And we remind ourselves to get rid of this at town meeting next year. So that's just an update on that. When it comes to the two other positions that are open. The town agent is kind of somewhat similar, it has no real authority, its basic premise is if the town is involved in a lawsuit, they can ask the town agent to assist. But beyond that interaction, there's, there's no real work that gets done. Finally, the auditor position was something we were supposed to eliminate this past town meeting and we did not. The village got rid of it last year. And again, I think if you want a position that maybe something you could work in, in theory, what the R A does is take the R A report that we pay our firm to do for us and then reads it aloud publicly at a meeting. As they come into the position. But it might give you a sense, so you know, go through our audit and look at things and, you know, you know, contribute the way you want to in that sense. So those are the kind of the two appointment positions we have. We do have an opening on the conservation committee and I believe there's also one opening on the E D C. As other opportunities if you want to pursue that as well. But I don't want to discourage you at all, so I'm trying to give you everything you can to make a decision. So that's what we have.
I haven't been to any of the committee meetings, so I guess I would want to go to those first before I join one of the committees. But the auditor, if you need someone in that position, I would certainly do that. Otherwise, it seems like the other two positions you're not really looking for anymore. Up to you.
I would love your enthusiasm to go to.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think, I mean, the E D C is a group that gets a large amount of money each year. But then kind of re-dress that money into the community. And again, get in the direction in about a month from this board. So that might be an exciting opportunity to kind of actually make change in the community. And work with a larger, and the people from housing to infrastructure to town development.
How big is that committee?
It's ten members.
Nine.
Nine.
Well, ideally, they should be nine, they're eight right now. And they're seeking a ninth and they meet on the first Thursday of the month. And the Conservation Commission meets on the third Wednesday. And they are a board of.
Seven. Yeah, they're down to five right now, right?
Down to five right now, so technically we need two. So I wouldn't, yeah, I would encourage you to attend those meetings if you think they're a fit.
Okay.
Is that kind of what?
Yeah. Absolutely.
Yeah, is that okay, Stephanie?
Yeah.
We really love enthusiasm.
Yeah.
We want you to stay enthusiastic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think there is a requirement to go to the committee meetings before you can be on the committees. But I will definitely look into the E D C, that sounds interesting.
And if you want, we can hook you up with the chair of the E D C and you can even meet with them individually to get a better sense of what they do.
Yeah, thank you.
Sounds great, thank you. Okay, Planning Commission. So just, we wanted to, is William here? No, we did, I'm gonna show you it's not online, we did email him to let him know that the same issue. Okay. So with the planning commission, there are two open spots, there are three candidates. All three candidates interviewed last week with the trustees. And the assumption or advice from me is that tomorrow in the joint meeting, there's an executive session for both boards to get together and talk about which two candidates they agree to.
Okay. Hey, first one is Alex Mulli.
Alex Mulli, South Woodstock resident since October twenty twenty-two. I've gotten to know some of you in the context of the working group forum to evaluate possible municipal ownership of the AquaDuck company. It's a pretty topical subject right now. I, I got involved in that because of my professional background and new to the community. Just wanting to get involved and wanting to understand how things work in the town I've moved to. It's been a good experience. I think that planning commission is a logical continuation of staying involved. I'd like to do that. I've spoken to Stephen and Laura about what it entails, so I think I have an understanding about, about what the, you know, the mission is, you know, given a charge from select board. And yeah, it's something that I'd be enthusiastic about participating in, I have the time to do it. I do not have formal, like zoning or planning background. But quick study and I definitely dig into whatever I commit my time to.
Have you been to any of the meetings?
I intended to attend the last one as the night of big snowstorm, so I did not make it to that.
Nobody did. Okay, and you have the time?
Yes.
Any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Hey, next up is Alicia Tallo.
Hi. Do you want me to just give you a summary or? So I'm Elise Batarlo. I, I moved here full-time in, just before school started in August. But I've been in and out of Woodstock for about twelve years, I lived in Heartland for two or three years, about twelve years ago. And I have a place in Palm Frit and have been here part-time in between. So I, I love Woodstock, I'm one of those people that came to visit twelve years ago and a month later moved to Heartland, just absolutely love it to death. I have, my background is mostly in real estate. All of my working career has been in real estate, everything from just selling houses to, I had a real estate fund in Germany where we had mixed-use buildings, all very old buildings, I've renovated historic buildings, historic houses. So I have a lot of familiarity with that portion of planning. I feel like planning, the zoning and planning is kind of the core of everything in a community. So it tells you, you know, it's shaped our community to be the way it is and it shapes how it will be in the future. So I think it's just, in some, that's the most important part of, of what we can do here. And so that's why I just always thought that's where I want to be a part of, or at least to start getting involved, getting involved in town, in the town work. So, yeah. I know Frank, I know Ben, I've talked to Frank here and there about some of his planning work, so I have a sense of what's going on there. And I have no time, just like everybody else, but I can make every meeting and do all the work needed.
Have you been to any meetings?
Been to about one and a half meetings.
Any questions?
I was just wondering if you've had a chance to look at the town plan?
I read the town plan, I did. And it's a really good town plan, I'm a little confused by it about like the timing of it, because it says it was just redone. But some of the parts didn't seem new, so I'm curious to learn more about the plan and what was, I guess, renovated in the plan when? And what is actually, what has happened and what hasn't in all of the action statements and so forth? But I, I think it's, it's a really good town plan compared to other plans I've seen, it's just really thorough and very clear. So, yeah.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Doesn't look like Stephen.
He might not be here if the time is listed.
Yeah.
Give him a time.
So if he comes in later, we can always.
Yeah.
Hey, additions and deletions. So two, we're gonna add an executive session at the end. Then also we want to add a town hall update from the working group, those are agreed. Okay, citizens comments?
I just wanted to comment on the planning commission. I urge you to, so you're, there's two candidate, you're, you're doing two candidates, is that correct?
Two spots, yeah.
Two spots, so I urge you to select those candidates who you feel are going to be most open-minded and planful about making the necessary changes to take Woodstock forward into the future. And not mired in the past, thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? You're up.
So just a few things, one, after way too long of debates, July fifth is gonna be the date for the July fourth fireworks. It's a Friday, we're unable to get the actual July fourth as a date. But we figured the next day, Friday, going to a Saturday would be a good alternative. Same band, hopefully the same as everything else, just a different day, so we're excited about that. We have received the final audit from our auditors, so they'll be sent to the boards in the coming days. And then we'll schedule a joint meeting with the auditors, come in and discuss their findings and the financials for Woodstock for FY twenty-three. There'll be a joint meeting tomorrow at five P M between the select board and the village trustee members. To kind of get together for the first time and discuss the short-term rental ordinance. And kind of then make a timeline for what happens next, so I just want to remind everyone of that. Of course, it'll be a public meeting. And then finally, I just want to touch base, about two weeks ago now, I held a summit with about twenty different town managers from Napa Valley. It was very successful, I want to thank the Woodstock Resorts, Mascomma, V C Three and Eagle Pixel and E D C for sponsorship. We got great feedback, I was told by many people, it was the best event they went to as a town manager. One person said they learned more in the two days and they learned two years on the job. So I'm very happy with the outcome and we're kind of looking at next steps. One of them, based on feedback, is trying to do something similar for select board members. And kind of get them in the room and talking about their issues and their challenges and seeing if we have similar success with that. So I'll keep you updated on that. And that's all I have.
Questions? Hey. Short-term rental update.
So Ben from the planning commission. If it's okay with the board. I think last week Ben presented to the village trustees with all the questions, he actually went through and read every single word for every answer they had. I think that was done partly because the questions were sent to the board members, you know, about twenty-four hours before the meeting, so they didn't have time to really read them and get through them. My hope is that the board members now, the public has that time to go through and read the questions and the answers. And so I'd recommend if, unless there's a need for it, if we can skip over the reading of the questions and go right into the select board's questions on the answers and kind of go from there.
Yeah, works.
And members public, if you don't know, there's a hard copies of the questions up front, I'll pass them out if anyone wants them.
Yep, I'll start, I guess, Ben.
Yeah.
One of the questions, I would say that surfaced in the past few weeks that maybe Carrie asked at the initial meeting, but I think is worth revisiting is, I'm curious as to why the planning commission didn't set in-zone caps as a part of the ordinance.
Yeah, it's a good question, so we definitely came across other municipalities that have a buy-zone cap. They were typically municipalities that had very simple zoning districts and very few zoning districts. So it was easy to kind of manage caps because they only had, you know, maybe five zoning districts in their entire town. Woodstock has over twenty-five zoning districts between the town and the village. And the complexity needed to manage a cap on each district was more than more, or it was more difficult to manage those caps with very little to gain. So I think the underlying question, or underlying comments about having caps on districts is not to have an adverse effect of short-term rentals too concentrated in any one district. But since we have kind of stated that, keeping the existing permitted holders of short-term rentals to be able to continue was one of our first and foremost objectives. That generating caps based on district necessarily wouldn't be able to accommodate those people who are already permitted. And I think at the trust, one of the last meetings, somebody came forward who had a public comment about diverse effect that short-term rentals had on their experience, because three of their neighbors were short-term rental owners. A cap on any specific district doesn't restrict the location of where short-term rentals occur. So even if there was a cap on that specific district, it wouldn't have really solved the issue that person had with short-term rentals. So the ease, the simplicity of just having an overall cap, we felt was a much more manageable and realistic objective for Woodstock with how complex our zoning is.
Great, thank you.
How many short-term rentals do we have now?
We have about seventy permitted short-term rentals. And then have estimated that there are probably about fourteen additional short-term rentals that are existing in the rural and rural five-acre and four-story districts that are existing under a pre-existing non-conforming use. So they were occurring before zoning regulations put in, so they're legally existing as current use holders. So eighty-four is the number that we are saying are permitted. But we have found that there are probably existing at any time between a hundred and eighty and two hundred short-term rentals in Woodstock.
I just think it's worth adding once again to the record. Because I have gotten a lot of feedback and I don't see it specifically called out here. But a lot of people feel that owner-occupied S T Rs and A D U versus non-homestead A D Rs that are a second property that's income-producing for someone who may or may not use the property regularly, should be handled differently. And it seems that the registrations being the same seems a little bit punitive to owner-occupied S T Rs and inconsequential to places that are just investments. And so can you talk a little bit about what your counsel was?
Yeah.
And, and why you've come down this way?
So most of the decisions were definitely balancing an aversion to risk with an ordinance, there definitely is a likelihood with ordinances on short-term rentals that there are litigation risks with any proposals going forward. We found that having an equal split between non-owner-occupied and owner-occupied lowered the town's risk of litigation significantly. And it was worth for us to set a bar that allowed all pre-existing permitted holders to continue operation. And so while the split is even at fifty-five to fifty-five because of that seventy permitted current short-term rental owners, about two-thirds of that is a non-owner-occupied and one-third owner-occupied, so that fifty-five cap for non-owner-occupied will be hit very quickly and we see that happening in the first year that it would hit that fifty-five cap. Therefore, essentially stopping future growth on non-owner-occupied rentals. Where for owner-occupied, less than half of those, that fifty-five cap, I think, so a third of seventy are permitted now. When we looked at the other short-term rentals operating without a permit, there's still a very low number of owner-occupied that we estimated that probably no more than thirty of those fifty-five registrations would be filled in that first year. So we didn't feel that fifty-five cap restricted growth by any means of non-owner-occupied. I think there was a general consensus that there's a lot of good arguments for allowing owner-occupied short-term rentals to continue. And didn't see a need to limit that, so having that fifty-five cap while it looks like it's even, and it is even, allows for a significant amount of growth. And I'd also point out, as I pointed in there, you know, this ordinance is definitely a point at times, so, you know, it can be affected later on. So if we reach that cap of fifty-five and the town decides that we want to grow, you know, that can be addressed later on.
And the registration fees are the same for owner-occupied versus?
They are not, no.
Are they?
So we proposed a seven hundred and fifty-dollar fee for owner-occupied and a three thousand for non-owner-occupied and then a two hundred and fifty-dollar per occupant of that, so that was a proposal. Again, that's the debate for you guys, yeah.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions? Any questions?
I had a small question. Ben, how many meetings do you estimate the planning commission have had on this publicly?
Publicly, we've had since at least six months of public meetings. So at least once a month in the last couple of months, twice a month, so probably about eight public meetings, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other question?
Yeah, so can I, Steve Fokerson, we see you, we'll get to you right after this conversation.
There's only one place to stand around here. I just want to echo Carrie's question and, and the concern, from my perspective, people I've heard talking, the biggest concern is the impact on the owner-occupied and I understand that it's capped currently. And, and I think it's a very good approach to have a lower fee for that. But in terms of the actual impact on housing stock in the village, the, the non-owner-occupied are clearly having a much larger impact. And I understand that we have to pay attention to the fact that the real estate, the, the short-term rental lobby has implicitly threatened to sue the town. I was in a meeting about a year ago where there was an implicit threat to sue the town if there was any difference in the restriction on non-owner-occupied versus owner-occupied. And, and clearly, people who have been working on this have a much better handle on it and I don't want to call that understanding and that into question, but I would, going forward, I, I would urge that we go ahead and pass this. But going forward, I would say let's look for ways that we can start dialing down on the non-owner-occupied, which are, again, are clearly having the major impact on housing here and the cost of housing here. So, so again, I urge you to pass this, but, but I think we should be looking for for ways that we can go forward on dealing with, with what are the, what are causing the, the most likely negative effects on, on housing and, and lifestyle in the town. And maybe at some point, being willing to take on a little bit more risk in terms of that. And I don't know what other precedents legally have done, so that would clearly involve asking lawyers if, you know, if Northampton, Massachusetts did this, did they lose the case or whatever? So, so again, I, I urge you to go ahead and adopt this, but, but I would really like to look for ways to address the most important part of the problem a little more aggressively to the extent that does not bring the town into great risk, thanks.
Can you? And could you just, just tell your name for?
Sure, Paula Townsend, resident. So, correct me if I missed.
You need to address the chair, sorry.
So what I was hearing from Ben was that there is estimated to likely be between a hundred and eighty and two hundred overall. So what I was hearing from Ben was that there is estimated to likely be between a hundred and eighty and two hundred overall short-term rentals at any given time, which I don't know if he meant that includes the seventy-five-ish permitted ones or not. Regardless of that, of the number over the seventy-five permitted, I would be curious how many they estimate of those are owner-occupied versus non-owner-occupied. And if we don't have any iota of a clue, then that is one more push I think towards not finalizing a plan with a cap until we know the real numbers.
Yeah, so that one eighty, two hundred does include the permitted short-term rentals. And Stephen probably can answer the question about how many are owner-occupied or non-occupied. But in our discussions, he said a very low number are owner-occupied and felt comfortable that the amount that were non or the amount that were owner-occupied, we still wouldn't even come close to the cap of fifty-five. So I don't have the exact breakdown, but the understanding was that the vast majority are non-owner-occupied short-term rentals.
You estimate there's about a hundred and fifty out there now?
Anyone from one eighty to two hundred?
One eighty to two hundred.
And seventy of them are permitted that we know of that do the thing correctly. The other ones are.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay. Does that answer your question?
The unpermitted ones permitted to make sure instead of doing it safely, doing it respectfully and then let's look at that number. It's the working that we would want to keep and maybe there is still room for growth. But if you don't know the numbers.
Excuse me interrupting, but we can't hear that person on Zoom. They're not speaking to the microphone.
Yep, thank you. I I want to be careful that we're, if we're going to discuss this tomorrow, like how much we want to discuss. But I think I'll just say, having done some of this work, that there's no way for us to know definitively if they're owner-occupied or non-owner-occupied because it takes a great amount of work if they're not permitted to trace down the address, which doesn't exist in a lot of the advertisements. And I think we're also making an assumption that we haven't already tried to bring those people into compliance, which is patently false. So I I think that any number we're going to get from the planning commission is, in my understanding, the best guesstimate we could have. I think we can, you know, in the next step of the legislative process, make any adjustments the board seeks to want to make, which is the point. And and thank, you know, the planning commission for their advice and recommendation, but it's not certainly a binary that we have to either pass or reject.
So the two things that I one, what is our confidence that we are able to bring these non-compliant SDRs into compliance with our new ordinances? And two, you know, I think it's important to look at what SCR percentages are in other communities and make sure we're still aligned with things that are working out well in other communities. I mean, we're not inventing a wheel, so.
Yeah, and maybe Ben, you want to speak to the percentages, the housing percentages?
Yeah, what was the first question or first issue you said yet to?
Talk about how confident we are that we're able to bring non-conforming?
Oh, yeah, okay.
Into compliance.
Yeah, that's easier to because you know, right now, you'd argue that we can't do that because we don't have any enforcement mechanisms. And that's why there exists so many non-permitted SDRs. And even the permitted SDRs, there's, you know, certain things in place that we just can't keep up with the the management of it. So in the proposed budget, there is additional money. There's already budgeted money in there for the software program. So the software program is the essential key to allow any enforcement because it scrapes the data and shows exactly what is out there. And so without that data and that record, it's kind of impossible to follow up on. So that's the first step. And the other step is additional funding for personnel to actually manage the program. So you know, Stephen's probably the best to respond to how his department feels about responding to it. But you know, in conversations with him, they feel with those two things that able to do it.
They've done for years that our regs are toothless, so.
Yeah. As far as percentages, you know, as a comparison that I put in there, you know, Burlington's at about two percent of housing units are short-term rentals. They did enact much stricter short-term rental ordinance because they do not allow non-hosted short-term rentals. So essentially, non-occupied rentals aren't allowed. So they have about two percent and I forget, that's, you know, two hundred some units. Obviously, a much bigger municipality than we are. Stowe, on the other hand, has over a thousand short-term rentals. And that's, you know, almost somewhere around a quarter of their housing units as short-term rentals. So just as Vermont examples, you know, it's kind of the range and it can vary quite a bit. We recommended that five to six percent because it felt an appropriate number to have, you know, one in twenty houses be a short-term rental. And once you start going up in that number, you know, that balance of character of neighborhood and quality of life for residents. While we definitely argue that owner-occupied allows people to just keep living in Woodstock and stay in Woodstock and afford their housing, there still are some negative effects to short-term rentals. So there is a need to kind of make sure there's not unlimited short-term rentals everywhere. But our five to six percent was kind of the board's collective comfort range of what the amount of housing could be for short-term rentals where it didn't start to feel like it was out of balance. And definitely felt that the importance of having those caps at that one hundred and ten, which gets us in that five to six percent, does the one thing of stopping not the continued expansion of non-occupied, which many would argue is the most detrimental for many reasons, but it still allows for a significant growth of the owner-occupied. So.
Do we know if Burlington's been sued for having a no non-hosted policy?
I believe they are currently under litigation, yes. I don't know the specifics of it, but they are.
So any outcomes?
Any other question? Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Come on up.
When we say unit, I'm hearing unit, maybe I'm translating as unit. But when we're looking at that five to six percent, if somebody owns a building with say, two or three units that are being short-term rented, does each one of those units equal one of that fifty-five or building with several short-term rental units in it? One
Yeah, so we're looking at housing units. So, you know, if it's apartments, it's apartments. It's not just a specific building.
Thank you.
I think Wendy has a question or comment online. Wendy?
Thank you, Eric. I have a question for the planning commission. Wendy Marinin, Village resident. I have a question for the planning commission. If if the discussion, what went into the discussion regarding limits on frequency that as such that we current have versus switching to unlimited rentals? And the reason I ask this question is what I feel is a an invitation for commercial enterprise in a residential neighborhood. So I would love to hear what the, if you could lead us through the dialogue or the decision-making process in a short way, in a quick way. That'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. So there's a couple of things. One, right now, there are caps. But again, there's no enforcement of caps in that we've found pretty systematic use of short-term rentals in an unlimited capacity already. So without enforcement, that's essentially kind of what happens in many cases. The ability to for short-term rentals to generate revenue and pay for the fees is also considered because to actually enforce and regulate any short-term rental ordinance effectively requires a lot of administrative costs. And the ability to pay for that cost is offset because you're now allowed to rent unlimited amount of times. Some zoning districts already have unlimited in forestry and R5, you're already allowed unlimited rentals. So there's no change there. And then it graduates down in the most strict is in the villages, six times per year and unlimited during foliage. But again, without without any oversight, we found that in many cases, those regulations aren't followed.
Thank you.
Any other question?
Derek Damas, I'm a long-term, short-term rental owner, Woodstock resident. Had a few questions, one being of that hundred and eighty to two hundred listings that were found on platforms. Was there any distinction in deciding or determining what were duplicate listings? What were on cross-platforms? What were listings that said they were Woodstock but might be outside of town boundaries like in Palm Ridge, Bridgewater? Surrounding towns. Another thing, I've been dealing with a lot of the short-term rental owners. I've reached out to many of them and working with them. Some of them are non-permitted. A lot of them don't know where to find the information to be in compliance. I've had somebody get in touch with me today. They can't find the application for the town short-term rental permit because it's at the bottom of the village short-term rental permit link on the zoning website. So I think there's a lot of people out there who are not compliant because it's just been a difficult procedure and task to figure out what's needed, what's not needed. There's a village ordinance currently, but also in village zoning, there's also STR rules that don't reflect what the village ordinance does. So it is extremely confusing for some people. And it's something that labeling a non-conforming STR as somebody who's just going out of the way, their way not to be conforming is not necessarily what their intentions are. One question I did have is what's the benefit of eliminating the existing non-conforming use in the R5 forestry district for the short-term rental usage as it was prior to twenty nineteen? And one confirmation for you guys. Last village trustee select board meeting, there was a vote to continue the moratorium for short-term rentals through the end of December. There was no mention in that meeting on the vote or the warning that the bed and breakfast were included in that moratorium. Just wondering if that was included in that, if that was implied in that, or if that was something that was just off the table and not being considered. Thank you.
I mean, to respond to the first comment, I think if you look at the the ordinance for short-term rentals, it explicitly says that you cannot operate without a permit. Whether it's hard to find the application or not, they can't speak to, but it is out there that it's very especially written that you do need a permit to have a short-term rental. And then our view that all it is is a phone call away to the zoning office to clarify any permit application needs. And the second question, why eliminate forestry and R5 non-conforming use? And ordinance does not look at zoning regulations. So to by doing ordinance, it kind of supersedes any non-conforming use. So everybody becomes compliant. But I would also say that it doesn't eliminate the ability for forestry and R5 to continue as they are operating. It just requires them to get a permit.
And on the last point, I believe the vote was to extend the moratorium that was already in place. And that moratorium does include bed and breakfast, I believe. So it was implied that it would be both of them. Any other questions? I would ask, we go back to the planning commission interviews for Stephen Fokerson, who's been patient online for us.
Hi there, Eric. Also, just a quick question. I think on your agenda, you actually had the other two, Alex and Lisa before me. Maybe I missed that part or something, but.
We got through that part really fast, Steve.
We're moving along.
Yeah.
Wow, I'm impressed. Okay.
Making record time tonight.
I guess so.
Just tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in the position.
Sure. So as I mentioned in my last interview, maybe wasn't explained enough. So I don't want to be too long-winded, but I am a new resident. My wife and I are new to to Woodstock. We've just been here. Owners just over two years and lived here since June of twenty twenty-two. My background, and this is our one and only home, by the way. This is not a second home. So we're all in in Woodstock. And how we found our way here is to me just not a surprise because you maybe all of us have arrived here if you weren't born here. I'm just so impressed with the village. And I'll say that throughout my career, I've lived primarily in small towns. I grew up in Los Angeles, but that was not where my heart was. And I left there many decades ago and have always found myself attracted to small-town life. And so happy and grateful to be part of the Woodstock community here now and seeing how people operate and function and the ability to talk with one another is quite impressive to me, regardless of your political outlook or anything else. I just have enjoyed the opportunity to interact with people here and be part of the community. And I know my wife is getting more and more heavily involved. My background is in in general contracting. My early years, nineteen eighties through nineteen nineties. And then I migrated into facilities management first as a planner estimator and moved to Boston area and worked there for seven years and then moved back to the Midwest and was a facilities director of a four-year liberal arts college in Southern Illinois, right on the Mississippi River. It was a historic national site, historic place and enjoyed that, living in, again, another very small community, but also at that time as being facilities director. Became very much interested in master planning. And and helped the college begin the the process of of master planning for the college for the next number of years out, decades out. So I found that to me to be of great interest. I love working with different people. Worked with different crews. So backing up a little bit, I was facilities director there of about a million one hundred thousand square feet and had a staff of about sixty-five people, full-time employees. And we handled everything there on-site. And I think about a little bit about Eric. I was kind of the town manager from the standpoint of just handling the the budgets for all of the utilities, all of the services provided other than computing and food service, but I handled everything else. And we are a self-contained campus. Had many, many projects, put in a new sewage treatment plant. There while I was facilities director as part of this master plan. And I just have always been touched by the opportunity to work with great people who put their work above their the, the work that they do and services they provide above their, their self-interests. And so migrating here and coming to Woodstock was quite, quite a change for us from the standpoint that it was going back to kind of my roots, if I can say that, and working with just some thoughtful, dedicated people. And I, in the two years I've been here, I've recognized there's clearly a great need. And I think particularly on the infrastructure side, was, was tried to get involved and understand better the needs for the high school, middle school. And went through and met with, I think it was Joe, who's the facilities director there and walked through that facility because I am fairly knowledgeable about school needs and campus needs. And it was really quite touched about how they had put together, to me, a very thoughtful plan. Realize there's different perspectives on that, but they certainly feel like they did their work. And I would agree with Joe that there was a great need there. The campus that I was on was built in the 1930s in the Midwest and we had many, many problems there. And we also owned all of our own facilities, all of our infrastructure. So natural gas lines, water, sewer, all of it was ours to manage. And there's some similarities here also. You have all underground electrical system here within the the village core. And we had that on our campus. And I know it just takes a great deal of planning and, and thoughtful inclusion of the community to put together a master plan that serves the institution where you're at for decades. So anyway, that's a bit of a rambling on my part. I apologize. I don't know how much you folks realize I'm new here, but it just, we love the community. We love to serve. And I think this is kind of a critical time to put your oar in the water if you want to be of, of help and service to the community you live in. So I'll leave that as opening comments.
Thank you. Typical question that we've asked. You'll be able to make all the meetings?
Well, I, I think, you know, there, what, first Wednesday, I believe of, of the month and that's certainly my goal. I'm typically there in town and I see no reason why I shouldn't be able to fulfill that duty.
The other question? Thank you. We're meeting tomorrow night with the trustees to make our decisions.
Okay. Well, thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to talk with everybody and have a good meeting.
Thanks.
Bye-bye.
Okay, next is the local license applications. Which we call at one time.
Can I make one comment? Sorry. So Sante just has a few outstanding parking tickets. So I talked to the chief today and he's okay with us approving that on the assumption that they'll pay the parking tickets when we get hold of them. So I think if you want to prove, go through and prove them all, just with a
I approve with Susan's general caveat and also that Sante pays their
Do a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thought this is going to be it, but I don't think he is. So the first one is for 27 Pleasant Streets. They want to now construct a new restaurant on that property. They're looking for increase in flow. You have all the information there. I believe they have, yes. Nikki, have they paid their fee yet? Are they waiting for after approval?
Uh, no, they pay the fee prior to coming to the board.
Okay.
And did Adam, Mike, some pay his fee as well?
Uh, yes. Both have paid.
I'd move to approve both of those.
Do a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have an payment request. Payment requests. And Eric checked into this and they did not use any water for the Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Uh, the next one is just a annual local management, management fee plan. Sorry. You have it in your booklet. Nothing has changed. We just need the chair to sign and David Green will sign and we'll send it over and it'll be all set.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, motion to approve the plan.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So next, sorry, do you want to do the, yeah.
I'll do the tone. If I was going to share my screen, so that's okay. You should be good to go.
Thanks, Nikki. All right. So this isn't everybody's packet, but this is just a breakdown of the work that the town hall working group, which is me, Ray and Eric have been doing. So just as a refresher, in December, we were asked, in addition with the scope, with defining what affordability meant in terms of the criteria, we decided that the best measure of that would be the current value of the building itself, which according to the Lister's office is about a million and a half. We decided against a formal appraisal due to the cost and availability of appraisers, specifically public and municipal building appraisers, but still feel this is an accurate data point for us to use. Eric was also able to update the list of staff requirements, which built on the list that was created by the first committee. Ray went through and made a list of potential relocation options, including space to rent, purchase and/or construct. We also met with Alita Wilson, the executive director of Pentangle, who informed us of the existence of some bank accounts and some funding that is remaining from the first town hall renovation committee. And also, as you may have noticed during this time, we have moved some town offices around to better serve their functions. We've met a handful of times and we kept kind of coming up against what is going to happen and I would assume is the next few months, which is the priorities and goal setting that we're looking to do over the next few months. And so our recommendation was to postpone for a few months our work so that we could be aligned with the goals and the priorities we set over April and May with Eric's work. But I'm happy to take questions. Great.
Question?
Thank you. Hi. Next is kind of setting date for a public forum for the Woodstock Aqueduct Company. The board got the financial analysis from the firm we hired, Gallagher, to look at the aqueduct. We've also entered an agreement with an engineer. And the hope is to kind of have a public forum. We did in August with a financial firm present and the engineers present for the public and the board to ask questions and get answers. Try to be as transparent as possible to get information. We know about the aqueduct out there publicly before the board and then the public votes on an acquisition. So I'm hoping to set a dates in the coming weeks to get that all situated. So if the board's okay with that, I can sidewalking with their consultants and come back with a few dates for the boards.
Yep.
Okay. Yep.
We just got a notification from the aqueduct company that they're going to double the rate. Which, you know, it's not a surprise and they obviously have a lot of work to do. But the, the discussions that I've been at about this are talking about the town starting to do a whole bunch of work if we actually acquire the aqueduct company. I don't expect anybody to have an answer for this now, but I think it would be worthwhile being prepared to address if we're currently going to double the rates, how is that going to affect, if it does affect the anticipated costs, operational costs for the town as opposed to the actual acquisition costs? Once, once the town takes control of the aqueduct company, if it does in fact take control and secondly, would this doubling of the rates of the current aqueduct company affect in any way the purchase price of the aqueduct company? And again, I know that none of this stuff has been determined in any, in any solid way, but I think it's going to come up. And, you know, I don't care if my rates double now to do necessary work, but if they're going to double again when the town buys it, that's going to start being of concern, not just to me, but to a whole bunch of people. So I think you're, you probably should be prepared to address those questions to the extent that it's possible to do so.
Yeah, I'll try and answer those best I can. One, we won't talk about any ongoing negotiations publicly, obviously.
Of course not.
I'll leave that to the side. The second, the select board is aware of the rate increases. I will say there's two separate things here. One is the aqueduct is a private company operating the way they see fit. The second is if the town was to acquire it and how the town that runs the water company could be completely different. So if the aqueduct doubled, doubles the fees and then the town then acquires the aqueduct, does not mean that we'll keep the same fee structure. It could be increased dramatically. We could have different priorities. I think in the fee structure the aqueduct has, they have $120,000 for a new employee. They have $130,000 for new pipes, other things that the town may decide to spend on something else. So it's not going to be, we're not going to acquire it with the current rates they have and then not make any adjustments. And based on the work we've done, we're extremely confident that the town owns it, the rates would be lower and then because of borrowing rate would be much lower.
Okay. I mean, that all makes perfect sense. And again, I don't expect anybody to have any definitive answer either today or when you have this public meeting. I think it's just something that's going to need to be addressed. Some of the work that was anticipated by the engineers as they were coming up with some, some pricing perhaps. How much of that work might, might be taken care of by the current current aqueduct companies? And so again, I don't, I don't expect anybody to be able to answer this really ever definitively. And I, I welcome the, the notion that the town can ultimately run this probably more efficiently and certainly with less borrowing costs going forward. So, so I would just be prepared to address it in a public meeting. Thanks.
Other business, we're going to executive session. Uh, I make like a motion to go into executive session when BSA 313 to discuss negotiation of real estate or lease purchase.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Let me just point out.
Uh, we're also going to the main room too. Eric, you have a better setup.
Have a good meeting.
Thanks.
Or a good executive session or whatever.
Before everybody leaves, can I? They missed my opportunity to move on. If you're even picking them, but somebody A lot of it is probably super redundant to other people's thoughts and comments, but I'll feel better knowing I and my name on there.
Thank you. The business, we're all set with that in a little minute. I want a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve in 12 minutes.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hey, last but not least, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.